It is six o'clock. I will call the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. Before we get into the agenda of the night, we have a request from Mr. Cook to call into the meeting. He's out of town this week. And per our policy, unless there's an objection, objection, he will be allowed. All right, Ms. Collins, you have him on the phone. Okay. Can you hear us, Mr. Cook?
I can barely hear you.
Then you'll never hear Mr. Terry. All right.
I hear a little better now.
Okay. All right. Tonight, we have Pastor Vanessa Baldwin from Bethel AME Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Pastor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's an honor for me to be here again with you to provide the invocation. And I would like us to begin by praying together, the prayer taught to the disciples. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy glory there, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For that is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Holy, eternal, and all-wise God, who sits high and looks low for us, because God loves and cares for us, we thank and praise you, Lord God, for this day and how you have kept us thus far this day. The Board of Supervisors are here to do the work to care for the business of the county and all of the county's residents. Lord God, we ask you to guide our county supervisors in wisdom, courage, compassion, love, kindness, and goodness, as they make decisions to serve all of the residents of With County. Let them remember that God has created all humans in God's image, just a little lower than the angels. We ask that the Holy Spirit rest, rule, and reign during this business session. We pray these things in the precious and matchless name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free and republican republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right. First item on the agenda is always citizens' time. I'll call you up. And as always, you will have three minutes. And Mr. Hankins, leave him the clipboard, sir. And Mr. Smith, since Mr. Cook's not here, I'd ask you to keep time for this.
Thank you, sir.
You're going to have to help me out. I can't.
Barbara Porter, that's me.
What was it? Barbara?
Barbara Porter.
Okay. First person we have signed up is Barbara Porter. Evening.
I live at one forty-nine Jacksonville Heights Road, and I've taken pictures of the house next to me. I've called multiple times and tried to talk to Stephen Berry, Martha Collins. No one never called back. The only person that ever called me was James Smith. And the house has been abandoned for three years. It got caught fire three years ago. The grass is up to your podium, and I have to live next to that. And my question to this whole area is, when is enough is enough? I have to pay for my yard to be mowed every two weeks. I shouldn't have to stand here and defend my rights, the house that nobody lives in. And I have pictures. Would you like to see them?
Yes, ma'am. If you'll give them to Mr. Berry. Is this the house we talked about last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe. It's one that.
One fifty-nine Jacksonville Heights, yes. And her name is Rita, uh, Rita Covahagan. She was the owner. And she also has another property on Downing Road that they mow all the time at four sixty-one. But no one seems to care to take care of this yard. I can't even let my dog out. It's embarrassing to sit on my front porch of my home. I pay sixty-five dollars every two weeks to have mowed.
Mr. Hankins, if I can.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hankins, I know we talked about this last time. What was you able to find out as far as?
Our code enforcement officer, Danny Blanchett, is working with the property owner's representative to get a mowing service in place to mow that yard. I was at a conference last week, so I haven't followed up with him to see what the outcome is on that, but I'll be glad to check it and get back to you and to Ms. Porter.
Yeah, if you could do that as soon as we can. Also, I think, I know that we had talked other options that we may have to pursue for that piece of property.
We can use the nuisance statute fifteen-two-nine-hundred and nine oh-six to pursue other options for that property. And we can certainly investigate that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we might have to, Mr. Berry.
Yes. Yeah. And unfortunately, one of the challenges is our property maintenance ordinance does not technically address mowing of yard. We are trying to get the owners to do that, but we do not have anything in any of our ordinance, like the town of Withfield has, regarding mowing in the process. So, the house is returned of a burnt house, and our property maintenance does address that and the cleanup of it. We are trying to get help with getting the yard mowed, but we don't have anything within any of our property maintenance that requires anyone to mow their yard.
I mean, nobody lives in the house. And I get what you're saying with this, but I mean, I've been going through this for three years, since the house caught fire.
That's what this works.
Oh, it really does.
Um, you have her, well, I have her contact information. I have spoken to Ms. Porter before. Yes.
One time.
Yeah.
And I left a message with Ms. Collins.
I've also spoke with you all the time.
I mean, it's pretty hard to, you know, standing, you know, before people that I feel like that really does not care about their county.
Well, ma'am, let me stop you right there, because the problem we have is, we don't have zoning. We can only do what the Code of Virginia allows us to do. That's what Mr. Berry was saying. We don't have zoning like the town of Withfield or the town of Retreat. So unless the Code of Virginia gives us that express power to make somebody mow their grass, we can't do it. So it's not that we don't care. We're just bound by.
I mean, has it always been like that, no zoning laws in the county?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we've never had zoning.
Because I'm originally from Chesapeake, Virginia, where they do have zoning laws.
Yeah, we've never had zoning.
And I moved up here to help take care of my mother before she passed, and I lost my dad two years ago.
Yes, ma'am. But what we'll do is, and like they were talking about, they've been researching what we can do according to the code. So we've got your contact information, Mr. Hankins, if you'll reach out to her and let her know what we find out. And we'll do what we can. Like I said, it's not that we don't care. We're just, you know.
Mr. Smith was telling me that y'all were talking about maybe condemning the home and tearing it down.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's not livable. Nobody lives in it.
That is one option, but it's not a fast process. It will take some time to go through that, if that's the option that the board elects to take.
But we'll stay in contact with you and let you know what progress we're making.
I appreciate it, because I mean, I'm a, you know, I took my daddy's house over when he died, and this is kind of hard for me to stand here and defend my rights as a person next to that property.
Well, like I said, we'll do what we can. We'll stay in contact with you and let you know what we find out.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Can you pass the pictures to everyone? Thank you very much.
All right. The next person we have signed up is Ms. Meyer.
Yes. Before I came here, I went over to check on the police break, and there's nothing happening over there. There's not even a footprint. So that's where that is. And also, there is no signage up about the detour from either end. And we're getting into a part of the summer, high traffic with rigs and so on going through to the National Forest and down at the other end. And it's just unfortunate that it's been almost a year and we can't get detour signs put up. So the people that are coming here as tourists, they know where they're going. Okay? And also, one of my neighbors stopped in the other day, and she just got her, quote, rebate check from the county, and it was for four dollars and change, which, okay, that's what she's entitled to. But my little one was like twenty-two dollars or something. All that we heard from Ms. Quinn coming through with hiring people, paperwork, postage, wouldn't it have been more cost-effective to just take it off of next year's bill? Just let people know that they will get it, and next year's tax bill will be reduced by, it would have been that four dollars and change, and so on and so forth. It just doesn't seem cost-effective to go through all that for almost nothing. And also, we have a garbage problem. Jean knows, right across from the firehouse in Speedway, there is a flatbed trailer there piled high with garbage. There's vermin running across the road at night and so on. And I've been complaining about that for a couple of months now, and nothing has happened. And it's very, very unfortunate. It's right across from our firehouse, and it's in the middle of our little town. So thank you so much.
Linda, you're talking across, across the road, but across the creek too.
Yes, right there.
I just, I wanted to make sure. I knew that one, and I was like, is there another one that I didn't know about?
No, just that one.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Meyer. That's all we have signed up for citizens' time, so I'll close citizens' time. The next item on our agenda is the payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a list of invoices that need to be paid. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Terry. I have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook, I will start with you, sir.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on our agenda is the minutes from our previous meeting for May the twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Hornet. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Right. Move on to old business. We have our VDOT secondary six-year plan resolutions. Mr. Berry?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. You have five, I believe, resolutions in front of you. Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are about the specific roads that are being improved and added to the six-year plan. Resolution two thousand twenty-three twenty-one is actually approving the six-year plan as attached. I will add that we, the, Ms. Collins, excuse me, Ms. Cummings noticed in the, the information they submitted, it did not include distance. I have emailed you all the updated six-year plan that actually has the distance of each road that needs, needed to be on there. This is a whole new form. I actually like it a little bit better because it's easier to read than the old form, but it does make it a little bit longer. But everything appears to be in order. The four roads that we've added are at the very end of the six-year plan. Semin Run, Klein Road, Trout Farm Road, and Wendy Hill Drive. And so, Mr. Chairman, you could either adopt these individually if the members so desire, or if you want to adopt them all in a block, you may do so.
Does anybody have a problem if we adopt them all in a block?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve them all in one block.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by, was that you?
Either.
Oh, it was both of them.
Mr. Terry, I'm sorry. Is there any questions or discussion about the list?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
The motion was to approve all the roads on the six-year plan in one block instead of approving them individually.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved. And is there anything else we need to do on that, Mr. Berry?
Uh, no, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the health insurance retiree policy. Is that you?
Yeah, that's, yes, Mr. Chairman. This is, as we have been discussing throughout this budget year and following insurance meetings, the school system has offered for many years a health insurance retiree policy. It has been a goal, a desire of the board to adopt a similar policy. I've presented this to you before. But this does establish a retiree policy. Basically, it does have a timeframe of seven years maximum, or Medicare age, whichever comes first. The employee does have to apply any VRS retiree credit back towards the premium first. And just like the school system, they are, the employee or retired employee will have to pay their share of any premium by the twentieth of each month in order to remain in the policy.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Berry? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the health insurance policy, retiree policy.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So approved. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the FY twenty-four budget and the FY twenty-three tax levy that we've set. Mr. Berry, do you want to?
Yeah, be glad, Mr. Chairman. In summary, all of the tax rates are staying the same as they are this year. Fifty-one cents per hundred on the real estate, two twenty-two per hundred on the personal property, a dollar fifty on the machinery and tools, and fifty-six cents on the merchant's capital. As we have been reviewing, we have a total operational budget of one twenty-one oh fifty-eight, seven thirteen, proposed for the next fiscal year. Be glad to answer any questions that you all may have on it, but I know that we have gone through it back and forth several times this year.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the FY twenty-four budget with the tax levies as advertised.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any further questions or discussion on the budget or the tax levies? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved. Our next item are appointments. Does any board member have any appointments or anybody interested in the committees we have openings on?
Mr. Chairman and I have been speaking to one individual for the library board, but was unable to make contact with that individual.
Just keep us updated. Do you have anything else under old business, Mr. Berry?
Um, I do not, sir.
Um, before we move on, because I guess it would be considered old business, will you reach out to VDOT and ask them what the status is on those detour signs?
Yes. I made a note to do so. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything under old business?
No, I don't.
All right. Well, move on to new business. We have a DCJS SRO incentive grant program award. Mr. Berry, do you want to proffer that?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. The SRO grant?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes. Mr. Klein, jump in here and correct me anywhere he wants, but we, Mr. Klein, working with, I think, Ms. Sweeney, has applied for and received a grant of seventy-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for our SRO program. I would request that the board authorize county administrator to sign.
All right. Entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Berry to sign the SRO grant.
So moved.
Second.
I was getting a point to you.
Have a motion by Mr. Hornet, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on the grant award? Right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
So approved.
Mr. Chairman, and I will advise you also, three months or so ago, you all approved three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, that's the right number, of the ARPA funds. We went ahead and amended appropriate that money, so when the grant came in, we could act on it quickly. We received that paperwork end of last week, I guess it was. I have signed that and submitted that back in to them, because you had already amended and appropriated, so I knew there's no objections to that information that has gone back in. And Mr. Klein has began preparing purchase orders. So that grant has been approved as well.
I appreciate Ms. Sweeney's work on it. It'd be, Chief Deputy Klein, if you could work with her on her photography skills. And I say that because I know she's upstairs videoing. And if you don't understand, when you see the picture she took of me and put on Facebook, you'll understand.
All right. Next items are Hickock Brown and Company, CPA's engagement letter. Hickock Brown has provided service for us for the last couple of years in the pre-audit work. They do pre-audit work for several of surrounding localities, and we have been pleased with their services, and they've worked well with our staff, and would recommend you all authorize execution of this agreement.
All right. Entertain a motion to authorize execution of the engagement letter. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under new business? I think you gave us some.
Yeah, I have a couple of handouts, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the, on the sheriff's, sheriff's purchase order requisition, Mr. Klein, the sheriff's office has received two quotes for the purchase of firearms. The total cost of them is in excess of our thirty thousand dollar amount that requires it to go to bid. However, the Code of Virginia's procurement thresholds are higher. If you all, they do receive two quotes, they are going with the lowest quoted vendor of this. This is part of that three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, and time is of the essence to get these purchase orders out. In lieu of going out and requiring a request for bid, the Board of Supervisors can approve us proceeding with this and not following our procurement policy, but we're still following within state procurement policy. So I would just request your all's approval for the county administrator to issue these, issue the purchase order for these firearms.
All right. Entertain a motion authorizing Mr. Berry to approve the purchase order.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Smith. Excuse me. Is there any questions or discussion about the request? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll abstain. Sorry.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
So approved. Sorry about that. I was thinking about hollering, rolling.
Um, there's also a few items I'm working with them on. They have, a few of the other items they are getting are sole source providers, and they'll provide the documentation, and they will have to put those on our website. They're going to sole source providers, but we are proceeding with those, so they can get that equipment ordered. The other item, Bond Council Services, you have a memo there. We advertise for Bond Council Services. They help us with rural development, the VRA, the different things we borrow money for. We put out a request for proposal, received three back. Mr. Hankins and I conducted the interviews. We recommend awarding the engagement with Spillman, Thomas, and Battle. They have done bond closing for us for quite a while now, and serve a whole lot of southwest Virginia areas and localities, and are very responsive. So we just recommend the board approve staff entering into an agreement with Spillman, Thomas, and Battle.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to enter into the agreement as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that agreement? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Last item, Mr. Chairman, I will ask for you all to set a public hearing on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as, for conveyance of property. As you all are aware, we are looking at conveying property to VDOT in Progress Park for the connector road, and also to Norfolk Southern for additional property down there along the main line, where they are looking at expansions of those main line areas. Would we, the, Mr. Farthing and I discussed it this morning, code requires, especially for Norfolk Southern, when we're conveying to someone else, the county has to have a public hearing for the conveyance of that property. So I would request that you all set a public hearing for June thirtieth, just so we can have that, and then we can sign off on the documents for conveyance of those properties.
What about the property of the retreat that we talked about, the brown property?
You know, that would probably be a good idea. Well, that would come to us. I will add that parcel to it.
Because we really don't, we don't own the land.
Well, it'll be going to another locality, which was to not require a public hearing, correct? It was funded at the town of Gold Tree.
Yeah, I looked at the statute this morning. I had some questions about that I wanted to look at.
For the safety of it, we will add that to it, and that way, if it's required, we've got it. So we'll add that parcel to it.
Right.
Martha, ignore the email I sent you. Remind me to change it tomorrow morning, once again.
What time do you want to set?
Uh, just nine oh five.
Is our meeting at ten?
The meeting's at ten.
Did we set it at ten? Then we'll set it at ten oh five. How's that?
I'm glad he didn't hear that.
Ten oh five. Thank you.
All right. Entertain a motion to set the public hearing for June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten oh five a.m.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Hornet. Any questions or discussion about the public hearing? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. So said. Anything else under new business?
No, sir.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
Would repress the board's indulgence for a closed session, a brief closed session for acquisition of real property at the end of the meeting.
A three.
A three. All right. We'll move on to board reports. We have Budget Committee.
The Budget Committee met on June fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and recommends the following: Approving Robinson Farmer Cox Audit Engagement Letter for the year end and June thirtieth, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, at a cost of sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
All right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion about that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Mr. Cook?
Aye.
So approved.
Authorizing the treasurer to obtain a certificate of deposit in the amount of one million dollars, callable by the BADH CD as a security for a Fort Chisal Water, wastewater treatment plant Appalachian Regional Commission grant. Term of the CD will be for three years.
All right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion about that recommendation? All right. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Berry, this was part of the Blue Star. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. This is the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant facility. Not, not anything dealing directly with the Lot Twenty-four property, but it does provide increased capacity of the wastewater treatment plant.
Thanks, sir. That's all I had, Mr. [inaudible].
All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
So approved. Anything else from the Budget Committee?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move into board member time, Mr. Cook, I'll start with you, sir.
I have nothing at this time, sir.
All right, thank you, sir, Mr. Burnett, I just, if you could get me an email, Mr. Barrett, on Shadow Lane's water PSI problems, I know he's going to put in some equipment and fix that, he's wanting to follow up with that, I'd like to thank Mr. Klein for the report for the speed cameras, I have been asked a lot on the accounting breakdown of that, and if the money's staying with the schools, or if it's going into a single pool, or anything, if we could get that information, I'd appreciate it, because we get a lot of questions, and that is all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Burnett, Ms. Lawson?
Just real quick, is Mr. Fowler still our contact for VDOT, or is he retired?
To my knowledge, he is still our contact, he gave me the date and I do not remember it off the top of my head.
I didn't know if it was June first or July first, but anyway, I just had a road concern, but I emailed him, I just want to make sure I emailed the right person.
Okay.
So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Couple things, Mr. Chairman, first, Mr. Hankins, where are we on the part-time staffing for Maxxmanus Friday?
Chief Heywood, Mr. Parnell and I interviewed firefighters, or potential firefighters, a week and a half ago, we are vetting those candidates now, looks like we will get them started sometime in early July. We interviewed seven candidates so far, we are looking for more candidates, so I would encourage anyone who's interested in, you know, part-time firefighting, to apply on our website, or if you know someone who does, to reach out to them.
Thanks, sir, also, I'll just stay with you, Mr. Hankins, the road signs, that, is he able to get those ordered?
They have been ordered, they are telling us that it'll be toward the end of July, before they are able to deliver those.
Okay, thanks, sir, and Mr. Barrett, did we find out anything on the Grouse Ridge Road, on the complaint with the heavy equipment?
Have none, I'll do a follow-up on that to see what they were able to do on that.
All right, thanks, sir, and then the last thing I've got, any information that we can get, we can make sure we communicate with this quarter on her complaint with the residences, roughly about twenty foot from her house, so would be great, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Horni?
I just wanted to bring Linda's thing up again, because someone had mentioned it to me, and she's right, we need detour signs at Gleaves Road, you've got horse trailers that are coming down through there, and they don't know where they're going, and there's no, I mean, there's nothing that tells them which way to go to get around it, so we need that, if you don't mind getting hold of VDOT.
And you're needing them all the way back at, probably, my thinking is, you're probably going to need them like at St. Peters, at the end of St. Peters Road?
Yep. To tell them to turn left there and go all the way around, and then bring them all the way back into the other end of Gleaves Road, because you're going to have people from North Carolina that are going to come in and go down St. Peters Road. Yep. I mean, if you could, if there was some way that you could communicate to them, you could actually send them on down twenty-one.
Yeah.
But they ain't going to know Gleaves, you put a sign up that says Gleaves Road closed, they ain't going to have a clue what that's.
Would it be, would it be a good idea to possibly come up with some maps and have Elizabeth shared on our social media, maybe put it on the website, just hopefully it gets shared?
It ain't going to hurt, that's for sure.
I mean, because it's a recreation area, most people are not from here, so I don't know, I'm sure Ms., I'm sure Ms. Myers has some horse groups you could.
We have a lot of things coming up, where we're going to have major traffic, we have a couple of endurance rides this year, and so on, one is the fifteenth of July is the first one, but there's more, and that's the fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, and so on coming in, so we need both that, we need.
If you look at that, Mr. Barrett, and see if she can put something together that is.
I mean, I was trying, I don't know exactly.
I don't want to say clear, because it's, if you're not from around here, it's hard to do.
Exactly. It's going to be hard to tell, I mean, coming from Gleaves, coming from, yeah, Huddle End, I mean, it's fairly simple, because, I mean, you just put them right at the end of Gleaves Road, but you got to put them, you got to put them before they turn up Gleaves Road. But the other end, I mean, if they're coming down St. Peters, you need them to turn when they come off St. Peters, instead of going down there and then have to turn around and come back, but, and what?
At the end of.
Yeah, at the end of, at the end of St. Peters.
Yeah, right there is, at the end of the bridge, little bridge.
Yeah.
You're going to have to come back.
Yeah.
Detour this way.
Left, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I hadn't, I hadn't even thought about the endurance rides that Linda said, but they do, a lot of them come in.
It sounds like Mary Jo's volunteering to get the information to Ms. Sweeney, so that'll work out.
Well, I was going to say, what I'd like to do, and maybe you working, we might get Brandon Moore on it, just take and create a map, mark in the areas, and we may be able to just get Johnny on as well, mark the areas where we think the signs should go, and we'll send that to VDOT and say, put these here, and, you know, I'm looking at you, because you've got the most knowledge of anybody in this room by the gene of that section of road over there, so.
I've been over a little bit of it.
Yeah.
The other thing I had was, I had a complaint, our extension, from extension about them ripping cables out when they took the AV stuff out at the expo, which I understand, I mean, it was all probably done in a hurry, but, I mean, if it, if it could have been done and saved the cables, it could have saved somebody, somewhere, some money down the road, if it, if what I was told was true, but the biggest thing that bothered me about it, and I don't know if, how true it was, but he says that he tried to contact both of y'all, and nobody would call him back, but I also know that this one was on vacation, and that one over there's got his hands full most of the time.
Well, and I didn't return his call because he had already met with Landon there at the scene, and the characterization that the equipment was ripped out is totally wrong, our IT department went, they did cut the cables because the way they were strapped into the ceiling, it was a lot more time, so it was better, more cost effective just to cut those, it's just category five cable, so it's not, you know, that expensive or that hard to find, so it was, everything was labeled, it was all moved carefully across the building into another location to make way for the construction.
I'll be honest, I mean, I figured it was probably a little blown out of proportion, but.
We can provide the cat five cable, and when I, when I got back and heard about it, that's IT said, we marked the, you know, we marked what this was and what this was, you just got to run the cable back between them in the process, so, yeah, I understand.
Long as they got to run it, and I don't have to try to figure out where they run to. I believe that's all I had, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Horni, Mr. Terry?
Nothing at this time, sir, thank you.
All right, just a couple of things, the governor and the ag commissioner, Mr. Guthrie, and Senator Hackworth were in Withfield today to present the proclamation for, it's Virginia Ag Week, and it's also Dairy, Virginia Dairy Month, they done it at the BDax Lab here in Withfield, and in true form, to put this rumor to rest, I cornered Mr. Guthrie and asked him if they were still considering moving this lab to Blacksburg, and he said that I could go on record of saying, as long as he was ag commissioner and Glenn Youngkin was governor, that lab would remain open, so if you'll spread that, because I know there's a lot of anxious people about that, did tour the lab, it's, it really is a neat operation, I think the governor really, he asked a lot of questions, he was really engaged, they didn't have any dead animals in there, they cleaned it out, but Dr. Lavelle and his staff done an excellent job, and while he was here, we did get some Dutchess milk in him, so, there's plenty of pictures after I told him to turn the label around, so, but anyway, like I said, it is Ag Week and Dairy Month, so thanks to Mr. Horni and all our farmers, because if you can't tell by looking up here, we like to eat, one, maybe that one serious thing, two seventy-one lots, Gap of the Ridge, I'm trying to take your road, Gap of the Ridge, when you talk to VDOT, they're having a lot of drainage issues, they understand that they're on the six-year plan, and, you know, they're excited about that, but I think it really needs to be ditched, and every time it rains, it's flooding, two seventy-one is one of the people that contacted me, but I think it's about that whole stretch of road, I don't know if they're out ditching, or what VDOT is doing right now, so, but if you'll just see if he can check on that, but besides that, that's all I've got, well, one more thing, we were talking about appointments, we've got a DSS Board appointment, and as most of you know, Marie Cohen, the principal at Jackson Memorial School, passed away unexpectedly last week, she had scheduled her retirement, and her official last day was going to be June the thirtieth, and I was actually going to see if she would serve on the DSS Board, but unfortunately, she passed away before she got to enjoy a day of retirement, she thirty-some years in education here in With County, so if you would, keep her, her daughter and her family in your prayers, certainly, certainly a tragedy, so, but besides that, that's all I've got.
Chairman, if I'm Mike, Mr. Smith, the pothole in front of fifty-two, was that, has that been addressed, in front of the trash and recycling center, and I think actually Mr. Cook?
No, it's not, it has not.
It's not, okay, those items are all on the list, and I have not received information on any of them, I just wanted to check and see.
Yeah, I was there Saturday, it was still.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next, we have a closed session under two point two thirty-seven eleven, A3, acquisition or disposition of property, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session, so moved, have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're now in closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, we're now back in open session and on the record, Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Whereas the Withfield County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve, the code of Virginia requires a certification by the Withfield County Board, the supervisors, and such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Withfield County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters are lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and are considered by the Withfield County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion, sir.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Smith, do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 All right, so approved, and I'll open the floor up for any motions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we authorize staff to enter into an option agreement for a proposed tower site.
All right, have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions or discussion about the motion? Hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved, all right, anything else to come before the board, Mr. Barrett?
The only other item, it's, before you recess, Mr. Chairman, just confirming, we're still wanting to do it, it's this Thursday, the planning commission has already recessed there, meeting to Thursday, planned to be here, I know Mr. Cook indicated he could not be available at that time, but we tried to poll everybody, this Thursday was the best we could come up with for the meeting, so I'll leave it up to you all to decide how you want to do that.
Yeah, Thursday was.
I know, Mr. Horni said he won't be able to make it, so is that still?
Probably won't, because of a family issue, but.
I'll be here, I don't know if you need to know, like, a number of supervisors.
Planning commission already recessed, my recommendation would be to go ahead and do it this Thursday, but if that's acceptable.
That's acceptable to me, I just, something came up and I just.
And it's just informational, I mean, no action's going to be taken, it's really just for them to review, I think Mr. Hankins is probably hitting the highlights of what they got in there, and just, I think they want a chance to sort of go, what they've gone through and what they put in there.
Mr. Cook, could you call in, or are you not available at all?
I don't know for sure, I, I can try to call in, but if it's just for information, then we're not taking any action, I'm okay with that.
It is just informational only, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, so we'll leave it Thursday, the fifteenth at six o'clock, and speaking of Thursday, I forgot this, Senior Day in the Park, District Three, it's Thursday, all day, if you want to stop by, but you have anything else, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir.
Mr. Hankins, you have anything?
No, sir.
Ms. Collins?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Fowling, you have anything?
I do not.
All right, we'll be in recess until Thursday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six PM.